All right, welcome back to a public session. A roll, we already did roll call, so we have public comment. Does anybody have anything? Hearing none, moving on to a big organization.
Okay, I make a motion to nominate Mr. Ruchel as the Chair of the Select Board.
Second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I make a motion to nominate Pat Crowley for Vice Chair. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'll make a motion to nominate Mr. Rajesh Kumar as the Clerk.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. There's been other selection assignments for 2018-19. So below it is 1718. Ref removal board, Mr. Hadley, do you still want to do that?
Want to hear.
Do I have a...
I'll make a motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. TWPC, Townwide Planning Committee, Ms. Bonson, do you still want to...
Yes, if possible, we've made some really good roads to that, and I'd like to finish it.
Do I hear a motion?
Some make a motion. Second.
Motion and a second, any other discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Upper Blackstone Water Pollution Abatement District, alternate. Mr. Crowley, I know how much work this is.
Oh, that one's brutal.
Make a motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. MBTA, Ms. Bonson?
That's another one, that's a toughie.
Okay, do you have a motion?
Make a motion.
Second.
Motion and a second, any other discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Pax Facility, Raj and Pat.
I'd like to continue that.
Me too.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
MWRA, alternate. Pat, Mr. Crowley, is that...
Yeah.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Affordable Housing Trust, I know Mr. Hadley wants to...
Yes, I definitely do.
Do we hear a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
CMRPC, alternate.
Yes.
Okay, Raj wants to stay on there.
Make the motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
And the next one is usually the Chair, is that right?
Yes, yes. Tell me, Mr. Ruchel. I'll make the motion, Mr. Ruchel, be the bylaw committee.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Economic Development, I would still be interested to stay on that.
Make the motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Municipal Building Committee, Raj.
Yes.
Does that committee...
No, never met.
Okay.
I'm just curious if it ever met. Doesn't meet?
You haven't met?
Nope, not even one.
Okay, I make the motion.
That's a easy committee.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Transportation Committee, Ex officio.
Yes.
Make the motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Peg Board, I would still be interested.
Make the motion.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So now we're doing the subcommittee, are the liaisons with you, is that, these usually on there? These are just kind of subcommittees.
So your appointments as liaisons to different committees.
Okay, so the Citizen Survey, myself and Raj.
Make the motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Town Beautification, Mr. Hadley and Mr. Crowley.
So mode.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Please. Any other discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So are we gonna, these are done, so we don't need these next three, right?
I wouldn't bother to add those on.
Yeah. Because everything's, well, I guess the only one we could do is the cemetery.
Cemetery contract.
So the police and the, oh wait, the fire is kind, could...
It's done, the police have voted to.
No, the fire, I'm saying.
Fire's done.
Now, I'll make a motion that Raj and John continue on cemetery contract negotiation.
I have a motion and a second, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, can I just ask a question? When is the school that usually we have a representation for the teacher's contract, and it's usually...
I think as we get closer to it, we do it. We don't usually do it at the beginning of the year like this. And that's what I recall in the past.
I do know they do have contracts coming up. Right, I'm asking.
Okay, next on is approving minutes, May 8th, regular session.
So mode.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And next is May 16th, regular session.
So move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
May 16th, executive session.
So mode.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And May 21st, regular session.
So move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Mr. Crowley.
I make a motion to approve the warrants for the period covering May 17th, 2018 to June 6th, 2018, payables warrants for the town FY 18, '48 and '49, payable warrant, payroll warrant FY 18, number 24, sewer warrants FY 18 SE 28 and FY 18 SE 29, school warrants FY 18 S 20 and 21, municipal light plant warrant FY 18, number 25.
So mode.
You have a second, you second that?
Second.
Okay, any other discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Okay, next we have, oh, it's 27:15, we have a public hearing considering amending policy L 18 Beautification of Town Squares and Islands. Can someone read that? Do you have that, Pat? You want to read that?
Yeah. Public notice is hereby given in conformity with the requirements of general bylaws of the Town of West Boylston. Article 23, public hearing and notice that the Board of Selectmen will meet on Wednesday, June 6th, 2018, at 7:15 PM for the purpose of considering amending policy L 18 Beautification of Town Squares and Islands. The meeting will be held in the Selectmen's Meeting Room of the Municipal Office Building, 140 Worcester Street, West Boylston. For additional information or to review the proposed information, please contact the Office of the Board of Selectmen, Town Administrator. All interested persons, groups, and agencies are invited to attend.
Okay, Anita, what...
So, the purpose of the hearing is to discuss the removal of the requirement that there only be one name on the signs. So, in doing that, there's a change under Section 5, and the suggestion is to delete the language, "The sign shall read 'Sponsored by' in the name of the sponsor along with company's logo."
So, I had requested this because we had the issue, the Boy Scouts had the island by Honey Farms, and it was sponsored by Sterling Greenery. Both of their names were on the sign. I didn't find any problems with it. So, we still, the sign still needs to be approved by the DPW, and it needs to be tasteful, but I don't see any issue with, if they partner with another group to help them, you know, a Sterling Greenery-type place to help them beautify the island. I personally don't have any issue with the name, more than one name being on the island.
So, you're saying only if they, if they go with somebody to do the work?
Well, if, basically, if you adopt that...
Basically, we're telling everybody, you can put two names on it.
Well, it just, you have a sign that's going to be a certain size, and as long as the DPW makes sure it's appropriate, you can put whatever you want on there.
So you can put 10, 10, 10 names, 10 businesses on it?
Right.
If you want.
If you want it, yes.
Yeah, but that's, that's...
So they didn't apply for it. The person who applied for is one business. So they can, they can add on to any other business?
But a lot of people, if they adopt an island...
So what don't...
They want, if you want it to look good, you cannot...
I agree, totally agree, but they can also combine, like 10 businesses combined and ask for a island, right?
So as long as the island is getting taken care of, why would they care how many people are on it?
Yes, I totally agree with you, but at the same time, they should apply to the town, so the town has to approve it, not the individual, one person gets the, one person get the island, they choose to put in like 10 other people, whom what they want, so...
Why would it matter on who is applying for it as long as they're getting taken care of?
I agree.
And if I read number five, it says limited to one side, sign, paid for by the sponsor, who determines, if we're looking at one sign, if two people after the island's been given decide to help out, what would it matter to us if there's two names on there? Because here it says one sign, it doesn't say one name on it. You could have more than one sponsor if you're interpreting this.
I agree, but at the same time, at the same time, the town has nothing to do with it in that case. So they can, one person can ask for one island, and then, you know, they can bring in like 10 other people and then put it on there.
But it's a two-by-three for a sign.
So why don't, why don't they ask the town in the first place, all the five people, "So, I want this island," right? They can ask that time, right? When you are allocating the islands, they can ask for it, five businesses.
You draw, you draw the island.
Yeah, they draw the island as a five, as a group.
So I guess the question I have is... You take, you take five islands in town, and then now you're the person that's giving them up, not, not this, not this policy anymore. If you're here and you take five islands, and you go, "Okay, now I'm going to go talk to Joe down the street and see if he wants to take this island from me," and this guy, that defeats the purpose of the policy.
Puts myself to think.
And the drawing every year, someone could get it and keep, you know, people, people get it and they keep it, I guess we, under the current policy, they keep it as long as they want, right?
Yes, we reach out to the people who already own the islands, and we ask, we give them first option to take or decline. But we do have, when you put on your application, finders and keepers, example, finders and keepers adopted several islands. In fact, Kevin took every island that didn't have, didn't get adopted, and he did them all, but they were all adopted under finders and keepers, so he has two names on his signs.
Yeah, he has two, I see, I consider that one business. I know what you're saying, but, but, so if he has those five, and he, now he kind of owns those.
He does.
He can say to Pat, "Pat, you want to put your tax company on one? I have it anyway. I don't want to turn it in. I'm just going to let you take it now and put your name on it." Then, then it will, it will be under someone else's control, and the policy will be, the person that owns it basically can do what he wants with it. It never, it never ends. Or if we want to put, I don't mind if we change it to two names can be on the sign, but they have to, when they put the application in, they have to say who they are. And then if they give their, if they, if those two names give it up, then it has to come back in and be given to, to the next person.
So what if, if one of them wants to give it up, one of them doesn't? It has to come back in?
I would say yes, because that way they're the, no new people would, could, might ever have a chance if one person controls five islands. No one can ever be in the drawing again.
Mr. Chairman, is the purpose of the policy to get the islands taken care of, or is the purpose of the policy to keep control? Because from where I'm sitting, we're talking about two different things. I thought when the policy first came in, a lot of the islands were not taken care of, so we were trying to get those taken care of. And if some people happened to have two or three, they, and I remember, I thought it was Mr. McCormick, that there were these empty islands, so he decided to take care of those and get those taken care of. I'm looking at it from my perspective, saying, I don't need that much control to say, I want to limit the people that are doing it. I'm looking at it saying, as long as the islands are taken care of, and it looks much better, which the one out front, well, up at, in Route 140 and 12 here, looks beautiful. I think the town appreciates that, and the people within the town, so to have those taken care of, that's, that's what I see, is what we're really trying to get to for the end result.
See, I, I just want it to be fair for all business to have a chance someday. If one person controls five, and he picks what names go on the sign, the poor guy that wants to try to get an island one day can never put his name in the drawing. So, I mean, I, I don't want to control it, I just want every, every business in town to have the opportunity to bid on an island.
Can I ask this question? Have we had a waiting list of people to take care of the island, so people, I thought, since I've been on my two terms, that just about everyone that put their name in got an island.
No, but if someone called you, you could, you, next year they could say, "All the islands are taken."
There, there is interest. We've been contacted actually by two other businesses. What we're doing now is when a new business comes into town, we do a welcome-to-town letter that Mr. Hadley signs off as Chairman of the Board and Chairman of Economic Development. And in that, we put in the Adopted Island Program, we put in the Gateway Sign Program, we put in, you know, business tour and everything, and people are now calling about islands, but we don't have any left right now.
Okay.
So that, so the answer would be, right now, there's no islands available.
But when we did the last...
But if the person that has five gives it to five different businesses, they'll say, "Why? The sign's changed on five islands, why weren't they available?" So I think, I don't mind putting two sign, I personally don't mind putting two names on the sign. They have to apply under those two names, and they can't change it every, every year. They have to, if, if that second person doesn't want to do it, then it comes back to the, to the drawing, so we can let some new businesses that might move to town, or new businesses that want to get involved. That's, but I agree with Pat, I don't mind having...
I, I think we're overthinking it. I, I think that the, I, I agree with Siobhan. You know, the, the islands are being taken care of, the goal of the policy is beautification of the town, not the advertisement for the, for the person that's adopting the island. And I just think it's, you know, in, in the situation of what happened with the Boy Scouts, they adopted, and they said, "We can't do this," and then they went and got Sterling Greenery to help them, and they were in violation of the policy, and I don't think people are hoarding, I don't think that we have a cabal that's hoarding islands and saying, "Let me, let me, you know, divvy these up." I, and I...
I, I just would like them, if somebody wants to give up the island, he should turn it back to the town, so a new person can get involved instead of just saying, "Hey, I got this island, do you want to take it from me now?" Because under this, this situation, he can do that.
They could have said enough.
And it will never, it will never come back to be drawn again. John's island, he can say, "I don't feel like doing it anymore, but do you want to take it?" I mean, we have to put some, we gotta try to get it back so new businesses can have a shot. I agree, the answer is to beautify the island, but I, I also would like to get new businesses involved, like we do on the entering sign. I mean, I'd like to get new people, and there are, there is interest, because Nancy says there's two or three people that would like an island.
So if they can't have an island, then they could have the entering sign, and that's another option. So I, I think we're opening, I think the business that have been here and doing it should get the first ops. Let's say, I'm not picking on the Boy Scouts, they came, as Mr. Crowley said, they couldn't handle it, they went to get some help, so now we're going to penalize them because they went to get some help to make the island beautiful, because their name wasn't brought to this group to get it approved. So now they can't put two names on there because the two people didn't come and have it done. Like Mr. Hadley and I share one on Goodyear and Mulled.
And you put in for it that way.
Right, right.
That's right.
But if something happens, I drop dead, that means that he has to turn it back in, even though he might want to keep it just under his name.
Well, yeah.
From what you're saying.
I didn't want, no, I didn't want to penalize the Boy Scouts. If the Boy Scouts reached out to us and we had the two-name policy, we could have just said, "Okay, we're adding..."
And we didn't penalize the Boy Scouts.
No, we let him do it.
We did shoot it.
We never said you can't do it.
Right, but I, I...
We sent a letter.
That, that was the reason I want to address this, is, is to prevent that from happening in the future. I understand where you're coming from, but I don't see, if somebody wants to give up the island, then I, they're giving up the island. They're going to say, "I don't want this anymore," and give it back to the town.
So, so I would just say, they could put two names on it, but if the person that got it, so you're saying he can change, he doesn't have to put his name with somebody else's? He can just change it to anybody he wants?
I...
And that's what you'd like it to do?
I just think it should be a, a sign.
An option, a sign.
They, they, if they're adopting the island, taking care of the island, they can put whatever they want on that sign, as long as it's, if the Department of Public Works, you know, agrees it's, for appropriateness, as the policy reads. I don't see any...
Then why do we have the policy?
I understand where you're, I understand where you're coming from, but I just don't see, you know...
The jury's not going to turn it back, because he might always find somebody that was willing to take it from him.
So are we better off putting a time limit, say, every two years or three years, you have to turn it back and remit him?
No, I don't want to do that.
No, I don't mind the business that, that's keep, that keeps it under his name. We have that family on Huntington Highway that's been doing it. I don't know if they've had a chance to get there again because of the work. But, yeah, I don't, I don't mind them keeping it, but they've kept it, and I think there were a couple names on that one, wasn't there at one time? The Huntington Highway, wasn't it? The family and the business?
No, it's Jack, it's under Jackie's Hair Salon. I think there are, I believe there are three families in Oakdale...
That do it for her.
...maintain it, and they told her she could put her sign there, because she's one of the families.
Yeah, see, that's, that, I won't blame her for that, but, so under this scenario now, they can put each family name in the business.
That's what it's sponsored by, right?
No, it's, no, it's just the business.
But who...
It's the families.
The people who adopted, I believe there were three families that adopted it. I don't have the paperwork in front of me. And one of the families is the person who owns the hair salon, and they told her that she could put her sign on it.
And they told us to under the policy.
And in accordance with this policy...
They told us under the policy, I believe, that that was the business that was going to be on it.
Yes.
Yeah. They didn't say the business, and then the Ruchel family, the Crowley family.
So when they applied, it was applied for under the name of the business, but three families take care of it?
Three families take care of it.
I'll take care of it. And then if that doesn't happen, how, what's the, what's going to be the procedure to come back if something happens and you need to add another name because you've got somebody else helping?
I don't mind to, I don't...
If I stay, if, if, let's say, Mr. Hadley and I, we don't even put a sign on that one, but the one that we have on Goodyear Maple, let's say something happens, and I can't fulfill that, does that mean Mr. Hadley has to come back and ask your permission for somebody else to take it? And if this board says no, then it goes to somebody else, is that fair again?
Was it applied under Mr. Hadley, or was it applied under both of them?
What happened was, we had a meet, we had a drawing, and it was the only island remaining, and you felt badly there was an island left. And Mr. Hadley and Ms. Bonson volunteered to take the island.
That was the case then, but now you've got three or four people you're turning away.
They want the big islands, the people who were calling. I got a phone call from an attorney from Worcester who wanted...
They, they want the visible islands, they don't want the ones up where you can't, no one can drive. They want something, they drive all day, so they can put their sign up so they can see them. It's an advertising thing for them.
Under the change would be, if I have all the visible islands, I never have to turn them in. So I would like to just put something in it, that two sign, two names can be on it, but something in it that has to be turned back if you, if you're going to completely change the name on it. I don't mind too. You, Pat gets it, and he, and I put my name on with it, I have no problem with that. But someday, if you say, "I don't want to do it anymore," you have to turn it back.
So how do we...
You can't give it to, you can't give it to...
So how do we write that into the policy?
And how do you monitor that?
Do you want to continue the hearing to the next meeting, and we can come up with some suggested language?
Yeah. Should we ask the public for our comment now, or since...
Your choice.
Yeah, does anybody have any comment on this?
No.
Can I...
We have a...
Mr. Chairman, just add to that, we, if that's the case, then there has to be a way to monitor it, because if we're changing it and somebody else is doing the work for you, is that a violation of the policy?
If you, if you're changing the name of the sign, then yeah, we'd have to come back to the, the DPW director, we'd have to approve another sign, so we would have to put it in there. That's my guess. So I have a motion, do you want a motion to...
Continue the hearing.
...to the next meeting?
Correct.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, no. Public hearing for, what is this, BEAR Holdings, holding 164 Shrewsbury Street, amendment of license to store. Anybody here for that? Yep.
I think I'm in the wrong place, I'm going to move out.
So do you want to tell us what you...
Yeah, my name's Kevin White, I work for Brentag Northeast.
Do we, do we, do we... I can do that, anybody?
One second. In accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 148, Section 13, the Board of Selectmen of the Town of West Boylston will hold a public hearing on the application of BEAR Holding Corporation 164 Shrewsbury Street, West Boylston, to amend their current license to store from 26,400 gallons of flammable liquids to 72,600 gallons, and from 250,000 gallons of combustibles to 445,000 gallons, up to the limits in accordance with NFPA 30 pursuant to 527 CMR 1.00, Table 1.12.8.50. Hearing will be held on Wednesday, June 6, 2018, at 7:30 PM in the Selectment Meeting Room at Town Hall, 140 West Street, West Boylston. All interested persons, groups, and agencies are invited to attend.
Now you can tell us what you're looking to do.
Okay. As Brentag Northeast, we had taken, had been bought out from Milco Distribution, which is the name on record right now. Um, at the time, when they had come in, they were looking to store flammables and combustible liquids. The license had allowed for only about 500,000 gallons of combustible liquids, with about 2,000 gallons of flammables. They had applied for that previous license for the 26,000. Under the previous sprinkler design, that wasn't allowed. The coverage was not going to be sufficient for flammable and/or combustible liquids. Having talked to the fire chief, we had hired an engineer. An engineer came in, designed, based on what we were looking for to cover for flammables and combustible liquids, the sprinkler engineer came up with a design of the sprinkler system that needed to be changed. With that, we'd made all the changes within the specifications from the, um, the engineer, and we have converted the previous system to a wet system. It was currently a dry system, so now we actually have water in the building that will cover the warehouse space where we intend to store flammable and combustible liquids in 55-gallon drums and 275-gallon IBC containers. We are looking for the 72,000 gallons based on where we can store those, in the center of the warehouse and along the east wall, which I've already given the fire chief a short plan of floor space of where we were going to come up. Based on that, that is the level of only five feet high, which would only be one high actually on the containers on a, um, non-combustible pallet. And that floor space equals out to about 1,355-gallon drums, less any floor space of an IBC. But that's where we came up with the gallonage of 72,600 for flammables. The 455,000 gallons is for the combustibles, which excludes the 195,000 gallons that are in a tank farm that has been shut down, but because it's within the property, it needs to be covered. But having spoken to the chief, everything's been shut down, no pumps, no tanks are accessible. Nothing could come out of there, although if it were to have any type of rupture, it is in a contained area that's capable of holding 110% of total capacity. So that's why we are here to ask for an amendment to increase the storage of 72,000 gallons based on the sprinkler design being changed, um, according to NFPA 30, and that does allow for coverage anywhere within that warehouse space, according to the narrative from the sprinkler engineer.
Does anybody have any questions or do we want to hear from the chief first?
I'd like to hear from him.
Explain this.
English?
So as you remember, back in September, Brentag had come before the board to have a license change. The stipulation was, we'll allow this license change, but the sprinkler system needs to be reviewed first. Brentag threw Kevin White, picked up the ball, and did what we asked. Contractor came in, did a sprinkler flow test, did a water flow test on the street to make sure there was adequate water. They agreed there was. Then it was determined that to cover flammable product, the system needed to be changed. There was a couple of choices. They could go to a foam system, they could convert it to a wet system, or like a deluge type system to protect it. And, you know, the company took their options, waited all out, and they opted to go with the wet system, but in that, going to a wet system, they needed to convert the warehouse to a heated warehouse, which it didn't have before. So that until, sent Brentag to the Building Department to get a permit to put a heating unit on the roof of the warehouse, which took some structural changes, which they are in the process of doing, but they really couldn't do it during the wintertime, plus they had so much other work to do. But Brentag has done their due diligence to remove the rack storage that was there because that's not permitted anymore. He's come up with a floor plan, he's had an emergency plan. This company's been in this type of business in West Boylston, dealing with combustibles for 30 years. So it's not like it's a, a total change of use. They're converting a little bit more to, to carry these flammable products, but as he stated in their sprinkler engineer report, if it is, if the product is stored at the height levels that it states it needs to be in the narrative, the sprinkler system would protect that product. And so you picture it this way, the really, the more flammable stuff is a 1C, 1B, excuse me. That has to be stored at one level. It cannot go over one level. It has to be stored at one level. So 155-gallon drum, which takes up about four square feet, would take up that spot, that sprinkler would protect, is many of those 55-gallon drums that you can fit into the 24,000-square-foot building. If they chose to go to a 2B, which is kind of in between flammable, has a little lower flash point, they can, they can put that at two levels. And that sprinkler system, no matter where they put it in that warehouse, the sprinkler engineer states that that product would be protected with this new wet system. The product that they used to have was fine being stored under the old system, so the new enhanced system would protect it even more because it's, it's a quicker system where the dry system would take time to react, so it needed to be converted to a, they put in larger pipes for the water to get the gallons permitted that they needed to protect this product. So working with the Building Department, Fire Department, Fire Department sat with the Fire Marshal's Office last week to have them review the sprinkler report, just to make sure that what we were looking at, um, was actual facts of, you know, and they were on board with that, and they, they vouched for the, you know, the sprinkler engineer that wrote the narrative. So they were saying he was a very good engineer, and that was helpful to see that they recognized the name just from a sheet of paper. They had some other concerns that we've addressed with Kevin since that time about ventilation, which Kevin has pointed out to us, that the company does have ventilation ports in the system. They also have emergency vents that would open in the event of a fire to get the hot gases released from the building. I met with that week. Since Monday, and we've reviewed this, and the Building Department is on board with this plan, and like I said, it's really dictated to the level of the product that will actually fit in this warehouse and be protected by the Brentag Corporation. On the Fire Department side, we've told Kevin that we're planning to do quarterly inspections of the product to ensure that it is stored at the proper levels, just to make sure everybody's on the right page. And they've agreed to that, and they really don't have any say because we have a right to go in and inspect whenever we want. Containment was another concern. The area, you know, outside the building, on the lower level towards the rear of the building, there is also a berm already built there from when it was, when they had the fuel pumps outside, which the DEP came in and told them years ago they needed to remove them, and it was what, two or three years ago, they've had them removed from the ground because they couldn't use those anymore. So again, part of that licensing change was removing that product off of it. That was underground storage. It went from underground storage, comes off the license, which again, the license stays with the property, it doesn't stay with the company. License is under the Board of Selectment, and that's why we're before you. I have given the application with my signature on it with the restriction that the product is stored at the levels under all the codes that were listed, that it's safe. And I vouch again.
You're uncomfortable with it?
I'm very comfortable with it. Kevin's been working at that plant for a long time.
Yeah.
Um, he's been there 20 years, I think.
Twenty-three.
And it's his heart and soul. The last time the company was here.
We said that we would do this if.
And we told him we needed to do it. Kevin really jumped on board because they kind of left him out there, and he's got his crew that was working in the facility, and he wants them protected, he wants to be protected.
Yeah.
And he's doing the due diligence to do everything correctly on our side, so we've supported this license amendment.
So does anybody, any of the board members have any questions?
One, inspections unannounced or are they announced inspections?
They'll, with my schedule, they'll be unannounced. I, I don't think I've made a, a meeting on time with Kevin. I was in the back of the ambulance the other day. I called back, said, Kevin, I'm going to be an hour late, so.
Okay.
Chief, I'm just curious, what are the combustibles and what are flammables are there? What kind of?
Uh, well, some, some of the flammables, uh, right now would be acetone, um, trying to think, I, I don't remember if I wrote it down myself.
Acetone is in liquid, right?
Yes, this is all liquid.
All liquid.
None of these are solids. It's all liquids.
These are the safety, uh, these are normal products.
I don't think, you know, some of the, I think he's just asking if you know.
Again, again, some of them are a little more nasty than others, and again, we have not reissued our permit, which, that if we're feeling uncomfortable with some of those, I can control the limits on those through the permitting process, but with the way the sprinkler is protected, all of those products that are in that sheet would be protected if they're stored at the proper level with the new system. And.
Yeah, I know, I love.
Did you read all that?
I.
Kevin and Brentag has, you know, has put together a folder that they've made for us right by the front door so that as products come and go, the new products are added, the old products will be moved to the back of the sheet, but everything that was in that building will be there.
Okay.
And on a changing basis. That was the other thing with the licensing, and some days, depending on what the consumer wants, they might need the, the more flammable, so they can only store it more, so they're not going to have enough room to store the.
Some of the other stuff.
The combustibles, so again, we'll be in there doing our due diligence, Kevin's in there doing his due diligence, they have policies that they cannot store over certain levels. Again, you go on the Brentag website, safety is their first concern, and we're going on that with what we've seen with them. Bentley's on board with it, so.
Anybody else have any questions? Anybody from the public have any questions?
No.
Most of the public here.
I think, you know, I may add this, I don't, I, I looked at all these things. I don't think so, any danger perhaps?
Well, I think, I think with the sprinkler systems they have in place, that's why they're much safer for us because they have it.
The company had tried a couple of different options before we went to this system. They wanted to store the product outside underneath a canopy. I said, absolutely not. We're not going to have this stuff sitting out in a tractor trailer, we're not having it there. I'd have, rather have it in a properly sprinkled building and proceed that way, so that's why we're at where we are.
I have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. Any other discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Make the motion to approve the application for the amended license.
One second.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nope.
We're all set.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. There's the copy for the board to put your sign on.
What the MSDS say?
So acetone, methanol, eth- ethanol, toluene, isopropyl, propanol.
Okay, next. I need a, you all set. Appointments concurrents on the following town administrator appointments. You're up.
So I'd actually like to ask David Lawson to come up to the table, um, asking that the board concur with appointing David Lawson as their new Veteran Services Officer effective July 1st. David, David lives in Pittsburgh. He's a US Army veteran with 21 years of service. He comes highly recommended by Doug Horka, our current Veteran Services Officer. He's been working with Quinn Sig to set up their Veteran Services Program. He's currently chairman of the board and outreach worker at New Patriots Veterans Outreach Center in Pittsburgh, Mass. They work to connect veterans with needed services. He's been working, volunteering his time here over the past few weeks with Doug, trying to learn the requirements of the job, and this position would be for five hours a week at an annual stipend of $5,000. And as I said, um, he's being highly recommended by Doug Horka. I thought it would be good to have a chance to meet David tonight and have him be visible on, on TV so people would see who our new Veteran Services Officer would be.
Okay, do I have a motion on that?
Make a motion to approve.
Second. Motion and a second. Anybody have any discussion?
If you could just, I mean, she read your, your brief background, just elaborate, you know, I know, I'm an army guy, so I, I'm interested to hear what your, you know, what your background is with the military.
Um, well, I, like I said, it was said that I spent 21 years, um, some in the National Guard, you know, with the 181, and the rest was active duty. I've been anywhere from, from a rifleman to, to a first sergeant. Um, I've been to Iraq, um, and, um, currently I'm doing things with, uh, a lot of outreach with the New Patriot Veterans Outreach Center, and I sit on the chairman of, as chairman of the board for that group. And, um, I do a lot of outreach to help, help the veterans in every which way. And doing this, you know, working with the veterans, you know, is, is not just to help them, but it also helps me in the long run. So it's veterans helping veterans, and I truly believe in that. My, my heart is into that, and I'm willing to do whatever it takes to make sure the veterans are taken care of.
Okay, great. Any other discussion?
Can you tell us, um, a little bit of why you think West Boylston's a good connection for you in this particular role?
Why is it a good connection? Um, it's a good, it was, it was recommended us to, to come here, um, and, you know, I'm just, I was willing and open to the, to the possibility of this position, to work, to work with veterans. I'm just willing to work with veterans, period.
Okay. Have you learned anything about the town since you've been?
I have. Um, I've learned some, um, I'm trying to learn more.
Yeah.
I'm trying, I'm trying to be more open to the town because I don't know a whole lot yet.
Okay, that's good.
Um, but I, I do pick up pretty quickly.
Okay, well, thank you.
Sounds like Doug Heyuju.
What's that?
Sounds like Doug Heyuju.
Yeah. He's a good man. He's got that office in check right now, so I, I got some big shoes to fit.
Hopefully that will continue.
Well, thank you for your service and thank you for your continued service helping us out with this issue, I, I feel. So we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Okay.
Perfect.
Thank you, David.
Thanks very much.
In touch.
All right, thank you.
Welcome. We look forward to seeing you again.
Thank you. Look forward to being here.
And I'd like to ask the board to concur with appointing Doug Horka as the Assistant Veteran Services Officer. This would be at no pay. He's asking to be allowed to continue as the assistant, not only to help David get on board and getting to the certified level, but also it would allow Doug to continue with some of the services he provides at a regional level to other veterans.
Do you want to make that separately or make it with all of yous?
Um, I can do it as a group?
Yeah, I think, yeah.
Okay, so then we have Kate Ivers as Conservation Commission Associate Member for three years, Paul Redmond to the Economic Development Task Force for three years, and Carrie Suda as a new volunteer grant writer for one year.
Do I hear a motion?
So move.
A motion, second. A second, any other discussion? Yeah.
I have a question. You have Kate Ivers, Conservation Commission.
Associate Member.
Volunteer, but her attendance at the FIS committee meetings has been less than stellar.
She's, she's been going to school and that's gearing down for her now, so, um, she's, will likely be stepping down from the FIS committee if she goes on to the Conservation Commission. So it's not that she's trying to double up and would be even more unavailable. I think she feels that the Conservation Commission would be a better fit based on her background and her.
But you're comfortable that moving forward, she'll be able to actually attend the meetings?
Yes, and this is an associate position, so it doesn't need to be at any meeting.
Understood.
Correct.
How many associate members are there on the conservation? I thought we already had two.
We had one vacant associate level.
We did, okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I have a question. The volun, so the volunteer grant, is that for like a school year or is that for the summer?
No, that, that, they, Carrie Suda is, he is a, um, Army vet, and he lives in Worcester, and he is looking to try to help it as a one-year appointment. He comes to us with some experience in terms of technical writing that he's done in his, um, deployed services, but, um, he's looking for it as a one-year appointment at this point.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Can I, can I ask you another question?
Yes.
So how, is that a Conservation Commission has no issue on that appointment?
No, actually, Bill Chase, the chairman of the Conservation Commission, was looking forward to having Kate be appointed.
Okay. Okay. Do you have a motion and a second? Any other discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, the next item is town administrators' reappointments.
Okay, so we have John Flynn and Tony Sanders for the pegboard for one year, Stephen Jones, Animal Control Officer for one year at the stipend of 11,000, Michael Pecar, Barbara Wyatt, Brenda Bowman, Ray DeSanti, Open Space Implementation Committee for one year, Pat Crowley and Chris Ruchow for Community Preservation Committee, those are three years, James Conway as a permanent patrolman, three years, Timothy Benson, permanent patrolman, three years, Theo Jordan, volunteer grant coordinator, one more year.
So move. Second.
A motion and a second. Um, now, just the other, okay, a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
I have a question.
Oh, sorry.
Are we going to have two grant writers?
We do.
Oh, we have, we have three at one time.
Well, we, we had three, well, one has stepped down.
So now we're back to three.
We're back to two.
Oh, we're back to two. Okay.
Is that anything happened on, uh, I think Theo is working on one of the grant, right? For the senior center?
He's working on helping these council and aging friends.
Yes.
Put together letters to send to foundations.
Okay. And for the, I do have one other question. For the pegboard, is there any other persons came in? Is there any other people applied for it?
No, but we do have, um, Jason Diamond, who has been the school liaison, is stepping down, so we will need to look for someone to replace that position within the pegboard.
Okay, thank you.
I'm all for volunteers. They want, I'd love to have 10 to help us out because, and if we could just, I think we've asked this before, an update, maybe at the next meeting on how we're doing with grants. grants. I don't know when the last time we did it was.
Yep, actually, I'll, I'll be adding that to my town administrator report on a regular basis, including tonight.
Okay, great. So I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion hearing, none all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, concurrence on the following office, for detailed work at the rate of $48 an hour for the period covering July 1st, 2018 through June 30th, 2019.
And Mr. Chairman of the Board, I would ask that you concur with the appointment of the officers from Auburn, Boylston, Clinton, Lancaster Sterling, and West Boylston as printed in the warrant.
So move.
A motion and a second. Uh, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
No, I do have.
Oh, one with, sorry.
So the detailed rate, 48, is the new rate or the old one?
That is at the current rate.
Current rate, yeah. Okay.
Okay, I'm sorry, you're all set?
Yep.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? No hearing, none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, Board of Selectments, reappointments, Larry Chisholm, Personnel Board for three years, and Pavel Lovin and Ray Burkoff for Finance Committee for three years.
So move.
Second. A motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Butch, you're up. You still here? Oh, there you are.
Tell the fleet. I have Mike straight up the front to talk about the seventh rate increase for the sort of...
Review sewer rate model and discuss next planned sewer rate increased.
Is there probably with me handouts? Is it okay to handle that?
Yeah, hand them over. Big paper, too.
Go hard on the eyes, not where I come from.
Yeah, so it doesn't matter how big you make it.
My fine glass.
Everybody's a one. Joke on my mom, it's like a sheet of plywood. This is, it's great in your computer, it doesn't fit anywhere else.
Thank you. Thank you.
Be decided. Maybe. So this is the dashboard from the, the rate model that we prepared and that I presented summarily, um, back in September when I, I mean, uh, yeah, it was September when I was here. And, um, so I wanted to just refresh on the, on the methodology and the, the strategy that was, that was applied here. The first thing to be, I guess to go over or clarify was, there was some discussion about the actual rate application for FY18, and at the time, you know, when we're working on these, we talk about when do we think that that'll be implemented, and we build that into the, into the model, because when you change the rates, the, or the timing of when you enact a rate change affects the revenue, because, you know, it's only after that point that the, the, that the build amounts change. So for FY18, we had planned for a January implementation, so, and I believe that that's what was done, so we're right on track there. And then, um, sort of just as a reminder, that the way the, um, the strategy was developed is that it was using 8% annual increases, um, for the next four or five years, understanding that at the end of every fiscal year, you can sort of update and readjust just to see if we're still on track, if, you know, the sewer consumption has stayed consistent, expenses, that, that kind of thing. So, in effect, what that meant was, so February, I mean, fiscal year 18 was a January implementation. The default status for the model is, assumes a July 1st, um, rate change. So, when you look at a January implementation, really what we're doing is we're, we take away half of that year's rate increase because it's, it's six months that didn't get affected. So, um, I guess the net effect is it, from the sewer users' perspective, it's the same. It's that their bills change in January, but looking at the enterprise side, it's, FY18 only took advantage of half of a year's rate increase, whereas FY19 was projected based on a full year. So I guess one of the questions I was asked is, um, you know, should you continue on a January cycle, um, or, you know, go in July? And, uh, I guess my response to that would be that, you know, once you reach steady state, it doesn't really matter when you do it. It's, um, it's just that first year you get an adjustment, so if you did it in January again, then everything just sort of shifts. So you would have a full year from January to January. And also, since the rate increases are numerically the same, you know, mathematically, there's really no effect.
Okay. Questions?
Is your FY18 still the projected numbers, or is that current numbers then projected out for remainder of the year?
That is, um, the model hasn't been changed since I was in front of you in September.
Any other questions? So we'll, we'll look at future 8%. You'll look at that before we do it?
Yeah, and, and I think honestly, I think is, um, from both sides, from the enterprise side and from your side, it, this sets up a, um, just a basis for an ongoing dialogue, you know, like, okay, how did we do last year, and what do we see? Are we still on track? Do we think we need to make any adjustments, that kind of thing? And I, personally, I think that's a great framework for, you know, informed decision-making.
I, I'd like to see, you know, assuming we're going to continue to do the 8% increase, I'd like to see it continue to stay in January, because we can then have the full, the prior fiscal year that we just, the, the rate increase, we'll have those numbers. When you come back before us in September, we'll have the end of the year numbers. You can plug in actual numbers and make, and, you know, it'll give us, one, we're not going to hit people with the 8% increase.
Six months.
Six months apart. But two, it'll give us a better, we'll have real numbers for the prior fiscal year that we can then say, oh, look, we, maybe we can get away with the six, or maybe we need to go to a nine, or something along those lines.
So just, just, I, I think that's fine. And just to be clear, the, um, I'm just thinking of my words. So the, yes, it would be another increase six months later, but it was only for half of the year too, so...
That's not how people are going to see it.
Yeah, no, I, I, yeah, trust me, I, I understand that, so...
Okay.
Yeah, I don't see any, I don't see any issue, because it's just going to keep, it just staggers. At first, the first year is the adjustment, you know what I mean? And then from there, it's just steady state.
I mean, it, basically, you've got to add a point five to each one of the, on your, down below.
You're right.
To get to this number, to get to that spot, add a point five to the fiscal year. It'll be halfway through fiscal year.
Right, yes, okay.
Anita?
So I, I, you know, I'd asked Mike to come tonight with Butch, just to, you know, clarify that the board still intends to go with your original proposal, that you do the smaller multi-year rate increases rather than the one large rate increase. That was a decision you had made last September and confirmed at your vote when you had the hearing in October. So that was one thing we wanted to reconfirm, and the other thing was the timing of the rate increase. So I'm hearing at least Pat say that, you know, it would be appropriate to do the next rate increase in January again, so that we have that one full year of increase. We can do the analysis in terms of how we did with increased revenues over the past 12 months.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
I do have a question. Does this, I know we're not, there are some people that still have not, are not on the system. Does this add anything for any people that decide to get on the system? Or are these just with our current numbers?
Oh, um, I am going to say that we, we held it steady. Um, I can look back at that, I don't remember. What I usually do is we'll look at the, the change over the last five years and we'll make, you know, we try to, to continue to project that. Sometimes what hap, or a lot of times what happens is people have projects in play. Well, there's a 40B going in, and so and so, and so, and so. And unless you're, you know, really ready to, to commit to that, I don't like to commit to that revenue, because, you know, you don't know, and, um, part of the, you know, we can call it true-up, I guess, at the end of a year is to look at the actual consumption, which is the biggest thing. That is your, your stock in trade, and then also the number of, of users, and see if that's, if that's trending up. So, I, I'm, honestly, I don't recall off the top of my head, but I want to say it was flat or maybe a little bit of growth, but I don't...
I think they added like a, a small percentage of growth.
Yeah.
Which is probably good, good in this town, because I don't think we're going to get a huge growth.
Right, right.
Anywhere on our sewer, on our sewer lines, I don't think.
Right, and, you know, the more is always the better. Economy to scale works well. And I, I think, you know, my opinion is, you know, when I work with cities, it's a lot more onerous to make changes in a city form or government, so they'll look at five years, because it takes, takes so much effort to get through it. But where it's a smaller town, you know, I, I personally believe in capital planning and this kind of thing, because you come back every year. It's not, they're surprised to, you know, to see you again, and...
It's hard to predict what we don't know.
Yeah, and it just, but it's, it's, it just keeps that dialogue going.
Yep.
And I think that's good decision making.
Okay, any other questions? So do we need a vote to vote the...
I actually don't think that we need a formal vote tonight. I think we're good, because, you know, the rate increase isn't too ineffective. This is more just to do kind of a health check.
Update.
To make sure that you're all still continuing with what your assumptions were and, and decisions you had made, Pat, Les Paul. If you were going to change your mind, we would need to know now, so that we could start to make some adjustments and prepare. So it's more just to check with you to make sure you're still continuing on as planned.
Anybody have any issue with that?
Is everybody else in agreement that we're, we wait until January?
Yeah, I think that's, that's what we planned on.
So I think, you know, one area is the good one.
Yes.
Yep. Thank you, sir.
Pleased to see you again.
Thank you, Mike.
Okay. Butch and Republic Services Tracks Collection.
I've got some expense sheets for sewer, maybe, trash. This is what our fiscal, 17 and 18 up to date.
So this breaks out hauling of picking up, and then also...
And it may not be preferred for discussion tonight, but it's had a few discussions.
Thank you. So what is the, um...
So what we're here tonight for is...
So in regards to this chat, what is the, what is the cost for picking up the rubbish, the hauling? Which one is that?
I'll let Mike tell you.
It's, uh, total project cost.
Just show you, 250,000.
So the...
Yeah, on the FY18 one, you see the one that has, oh, here it is. It says Republic right next to it.
249, 311.
249, 311. And then the one with Casella.
Curbside collection cost?
Yep, yep.
And that's...
That's the, that's our contract price for the share.
The trucks to drive around and pick up.
And, yes, and to the, that covers the disposal of the recyclables also.
But that's, there's no cost, when they bring those to, where do they go? Casella?
When they bring the recyclables to Casella, that's included in that price. The trash, we pay a tipping fee on the trash.
Right, but the Casella, when they, when they bring recyclables to Casella, they don't get charged anything either?
They...
For the recycling.
I, we don't get charged, that's all.
Yeah, we don't, yeah.
I'm sure what they deal, they have with Casella, but we, we don't get charged for recyclables. It's in that fee. It's in that 249.
Okay.
Where we get charged for, but it's just, it's such a variable thing that they do it this way. But we're here tonight because the trash pickup, as you may have heard, hasn't been very, very good lately. And we have some issues, we have some inconsistencies, we miss streets repeatedly, we, we end up sort of abusing our Code Red system to try and notify people about this, and we brought Dan Higgins and Joe Alves in from Republic to try and explain to us what, what they can do, or, and at this point, as far as I'm concerned, we're not operating at contract level at all, so I'll bring Dan in.
And also, one other thing is you being notified of issues. You haven't been getting that notification.
I usually get, a couple of times they've missed, but I usually do get notification. It's late, when sometimes it's a result of somebody else calling me first, and then I call them, but that can be improved, for sure. But the thing is, I don't really want to be notified, I want the trash to be picked up. I want to have that notification.
We do too.
Yeah.
Okay, so do you want to, you folks want to come up? Just identify yourself?
Yeah, Dan Higgins, Municipal Services Manager for Republic Services. I manage 46 contracts in the Commonwealth, and Joe Alves is our Division Manager for our Auburn Division. So our crew that services the town, he manages them on a daily basis. The folks who take care of our trucks in terms of what we operate. So we've had some issues recently. We did meet with town staff and with Butch about a month ago, I think, and went over some of the plans we had in terms of try to address some of the service issues that we've had. And, you know, Joe can update, we're, we've got some, we've had a change in crew here. We've got a longtime worker who is responsible for the town, who opted to move geographically, but still working for Republic. We have opportunities for our employees to go elsewhere, and he did, so, and we have, we've struggled in terms of the transition to the new driver who started in town this week, who is a longtime employee of the company, who serviced another town. So that's really the challenge we've had recently, is unplugging a longtime worker who serviced the town with some, some transitional employees. So, you know, I hope Joe updated in terms of where we stand.
Well, that's, if I could just, before you update, there may, there were issues during the winter, too.
Yeah.
The winter was too cold, and you couldn't dump the rubbish, so we had all kinds of issues there, and now, we don't know. It's too hot, and there's a new driver, and you're having issues again. So I guess I'm looking at both of those.
If it was a one-time thing, we wouldn't have asked you to come in here, we would have said, okay, something happened. This has been, this is an ongoing issue. It's not just because you had a new driver last week. That might have been the reason last week, but it's not a one-time thing. This is, this is an ongoing issue with the town.
We understand.
My, my issue is, I want to clarify, we heard that 13 out of the 26 trucks were broken down?
16 out of 60.
16 out of 60 trucks were broken?
Or out of service for a period of time, yeah.
That's an enormous amount of vehicles in a fleet to be broken. I mean, is that a maintenance issue? Is that a, because they're old?
Hey, every, we have, we have a maintenance, we have a maintenance procedure where we go through the vehicles, so at times when the, the shop, or at night, it's on the second shift where they're doing preventive maintenance on the fleet, so if there's an issue with the vehicle, they may take it out of service if it's not operational, or it's a safety issue. So in those cases, we, at times, we have those challenges.
So, yeah. Yeah, I would, I would say to that, I mean, I understand what Mr. Hadley's saying. Personally, I could care less if all 60 vehicles were out of service. All we, all we want up here, and the residents in town want, is their rubbish picked up. So I think if, if 40 vehicles are broken next week, I don't know what you have to do.
Right, that's our problem, that's not your problem.
Yeah, right.
And, so I, I've only been in my position for about seven weeks now. I'm not new to the company, been with the company for 15 years, but came over to Auburn right before I met with Anita and Butch. So, over the winter, we did have a lot of issues, and I wasn't here for all of those. I was in the Springfield Division at the time, so I apologize for those, I really can't speak to those, but, um, the lately issues, the issues we have, recent, Gerardo wasn't here for a number of years in town, he transferred, and then I had another employee line up to come here, but it wasn't a long-term solution for us, because he's leaving the company, he's, he's also moving. So I wanted to find the right driver, so you guys didn't have more turnover, so we had some, so some fill-in drivers, if you will. So, in regards to the trucks being down, of the 16 trucks down, that's, we, you know, we have 74 trucks in our fleet, so the 16 isn't all collection trucks. Some of it could be, you know, the different styles of trucks, some of it deal with hospitals or construction sites types trucks, so...
Mr. Chairman, can I inter, I have a question. Can I just ask before everybody else got to state something? With Mr. Ruccio saying that, I totally agree that, you know, it's not our headache. We're not here wanting excuses, and that's what I'm starting to hear. In a place of business, people don't accept excuses. We need the solutions, and as has been stated by my fellow board members, we really don't care what your headaches are. We want it to happen, and we want it to happen now.
Yep, absolutely, that's right.
And it's not happening, because we've still had issues this week. And I don't care if you have to be out there until 10 o'clock at night to get it done, because our phones are ringing, as well as the town administrators' phones are ringing. That's not acceptable, that's not what the contract says, and it needs to be fixed yesterday.
Yep.
So I'm not ready to listen and accept excuses. I want to hear the solutions.
Yep, yep, and I apologize, I wasn't trying to make excuses.
Oh, yeah, if you can just, yeah, bring us up to where you...
So, so a new driver started in town on Monday, and I've already spoke to Butch, so Nick Abashia is the driver's name, eight-year employee, serves the town of Munson for a number of years for us, outstanding service. Munson is in a five-day-a-week contract, so he'd go to other towns on the other days of the week. So we have an appointment tomorrow at 11:00 AM to meet, neck to meet Butch at the DPW Yard, to exchange phone numbers.
yard. They're gonna exchange phone numbers. We're gonna have a communication plan, like during the day, check-in points during the day, how you doing on your route, so it's real-time communication. So you're not gonna get that email, Butch isn't gonna get an email at the end of the day, you know, at five o'clock at night, that, hey, look, we missed a street, or whatever it may be. Another, another part I wanna do is like a, like a hot list, or condo hot list, because I think it's two, is it two fifty?
Two fifty Worcester Street.
Two fifty Worcester Street is the, is the back end of the four-unit condos, been missed consistently. It was serviced this week, but we missed some other stops, so right here on Worcester Street. So, we're gonna have a hot list, so if he's on vacation, being that your employee does have some vacation time built up, we're gonna make sure those consistent misses aren't gonna happen when he's out, because we're, we're getting fully staffed now to have a substitute driver, call a swing driver, ride with him the week before he goes on vacation to ensure the service is where it should be. That's our, yeah, so we're gonna try to run the route the same, the same way every day, like Gerardo ran it. I know people are, you know, sometimes creatures of habit, you know, they set their watch by. My trash is picked up by nine-thirty every Tuesday, and if he's running the route differently, and we get there at two-thirty instead of nine-thirty, people perceive miss, and there might be a panic call in to you guys, so we're trying to avoid that as well. So we're gonna make sure we're running the route the same way every week, so it's more a consistent pickup schedule.
So the, the, I think we, we require they put it out by seven-thirty?
By seven o'clock, and that's a big issue.
By seven o'clock, but...
Some people got used to Gerardo coming at a certain time every day, every week, every month. He was very consistent, so people knew he wasn't gonna get there till ten o'clock, eleven o'clock, two o'clock, so they put their trash out accordingly, and worked perfectly until he left.
Yeah, but we can, I mean, I don't think, I personally don't think we can expect them to be exactly, you know, two o'clock, what if he got there at one-thirty one day? So I think, I think this...
He's been putting his trash out at seven.
I think the seven's good, but I think people are uncomfortable when it's picked up at four-thirty or five. That's, that's when they get a little nervous. I don't think it's, it's one or two in the afternoon. I think it's, I mean, I drove into my neighborhood one day at four-thirty, and the trash was still there, and then I heard the truck, and then it picked up half the neighborhood and went home. So I think just, if you want it out at seven, you should be able to pick up the area well before four-thirty, I think.
Yep, absolutely. We also changed the truck that's in town as well, for capacity reasons, to, it's a larger, it's a larger truck.
Okay.
Yep.
Because I know that was an issue before, you had it going empty.
So if the truck is full at halfway up the road, do you send another truck out?
So, real-time communication during the day. We're gonna have supervisors reach out to the driver, you know, say eleven AM, hey, you know, how's your route going? If he's getting full, if there's a long wait time at the wheel abrider, we're gonna bring him a truck, a relief driver will bring him a truck. He stays en route, and we take the, the full truck away, so he doesn't have to break route to go dump. Because we're experiencing some wait times at the wheel abrider.
Does it, does it, on a normal Wednesday, does it get emptied two or three times?
I, I think twice.
Twice.
I think twice, yes.
So maybe every, every day, maybe twice? Do you know, Butch?
I'm pretty sure they used to go around noon time and then come back.
To finish.
Only empty once, right? They fill up twice.
Right, yeah. Yeah, fill up, empty once, so middle of the day they empty.
Empty at the end of the day, yeah.
So who, who are the, the drivers who are fill-in drivers last two weeks particularly?
Who are they? Newer employees?
So every day is a new employee?
No, no, not every day. We did have one driver get hurt en route, I think Butch and I talked about that, and middle of the afternoon, I got hurt, we gotta take him off route, so we had a couple of different guys filling over the last few weeks.
So, next, next week onwards, are, when the permanent driver you are going to put it in?
Uh, he started this Monday.
Started this Monday.
And, so...
Even this, this Monday, if you say this Monday, there was, trash was not picked up Monday, as well as Tuesday, there are some other places, he did, he did miss it.
He, he may, he did miss a few, and, you know, he's still learning the route, because we didn't have Gerardo here, so...
But if you pick up on the, say Worcester Street, if you pick up one house, how can you miss the another house?
Exactly, so I, I don't have an answer for that, yes.
So he did get the, yeah. So I think, I have...
He get the call, you know, he get the call all the time. Our DPW director get the call all the time.
Yeah.
So even this week, last week was the worst. This week, I don't think so that they did better than last week.
Well, say...
It's the same kind of complaint. Hopefully it will change.
Yeah.
To me, they're in violation of the contract, because they haven't done what they've said they were supposed to do. It's in, it's not a week, it's not a month, it's six months, if not more, this has been going on. So that's, it's why I have, I think it's a, you guys are in violation of the contract.
So, yeah, that, I guess with that said, what, what, we want them to make it better. I, I don't know, if there, if there anything else, I mean...
Do we have to give another chance? I don't know.
Are there things that we, if they're, everybody, we have a contract they're supposed to be accountable for. They're not doing that, so what step can we take? And I think you need to make something back to the town to show the good faith that you're gonna take care of this, because I'm still hearing excuses, and what happens if a truck drags, breaks down again, and Butch doesn't get a phone call till four o'clock in the afternoon? You know, he's the one also taking the other phone calls. So, as Mr. Hadley said, and I said earlier, excuses, so what are we able to do, Anita, to get something fixed?
Sure. The, the contract does provide terms for notification to Republic if we feel that they are in violation of the terms of the contract, and one of the key things that we have an obligation to do, if we feel that's indeed the case, is to provide them written notice, that we have to tell them that we feel that they're in breach of the contract, and tell them the reasons why we feel they're in breach of the contract. We, we are obligated to allow them five working days to cure that deficiency, which is pretty common in contracts. So we've actually put together a sample letter, which could be signed by the chairman tonight, if the board so chooses, that we could give Republic written notification almost immediately, to let them know that we feel that they're in violation of the contract and giving them the five days to cure.
I would ask that we do that.
I agree.
Do we need a motion?
I would ask you to vote.
Make a motion.
I'll second.
A motion is seconded in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, so, well, you know you're gonna get the letter now, so now, they get the letter, they have five days to fix it. Five days, everything works great, day seven, and eight, and nine, it's bad again, then we need to send another letter, then we'd have to decide that.
I mean, and it would get to the point where we meet, you know, if we feel that there's continued exposure here, then that would be a different type of discussion that we're having at that point.
Correct.
There's another provision within the contract that does allow us to go out and get other services to fill the void, so to speak, if needed, but that's not something that I'm recommending that we do at this point. I think we need to provide them opportunity for appropriate notice and opportunity to cure.
And if it continues, the, then the answer becomes, I'm assuming there's something in the contract that could say, you're in breach of contract, we're gonna void this contract.
Yes, you do have the opportunity to, to terminate the contract.
And what are the steps, if, hopefully, you guys get the five-day notice, and we're seeing you again in three years, when you're bidding on the contracting, and whenever it's up, what are the steps that would need to be taken if this continues to get to the point where this contract is now null and void?
I'm not an attorney, but I would guess that if we had an attorney present in the room, they would say we'd have to give them a few opportunities to cure, and show that there's a clear pattern that is present, that's showing that despite the appropriate notice and opportunity to cure, that it hasn't been done to our satisfaction, and then we'd have the opportunity to vote to terminate the contract.
I think that's, Butch, is there a cost to send out those nine-one-one reverse?
Well, we pay a contract cost anyway.
So it doesn't cost any more when we use it?
To that, you know, we are using nine-one-one, reverse nine-one-one for trash. Some of the town residents did complain, if you say nine-one-one, nine-one-one, for, just for the trash, if there is an emergency, real emergency. So I think, you know, we are abusing that, too.
Hopefully all gets fixed.
Hope, yeah, just for the trash, you know, we are using nine, reverse nine-one-one.
Yeah, I mean, I guess, we don't have to, have to use that, but that's the only way to notify.
It's not a choice.
It's not really, it's...
It's not a one.
Yeah.
It's kind of, well, how else do I, to let them know, if they want to know?
To residents to leave it out.
I mean, I know I heard one person complaining that, using it.
Right.
I didn't want people saying, yeah.
Oh, thank you for letting, you know, letting us know, and I think that, that we're, we're getting the call, because you'll send out the thing, say, keep it out in your street, they're gonna come tomorrow morning, and they didn't come tomorrow morning. That was, that's what, that's the worst case, so. I, I appreciate you coming in, I mean, I just think you know where we stand.
Absolutely.
I think, you know, for tomorrow onwards, maybe you can follow up on that, maybe fix it, you know? You got to fix it.
Yep, absolutely.
Thank you. You know, we, we appreciate being a longtime service provider for the town, and we've worked really hard, you know, to be here as long as we have been, and we, we hear you, and we need to fix it, and we will.
Right, and just, my, my biggest thing, as far as I'm concerned, and I'm sure the board is, that you communicate with Butch, because he needs to, he needs to know what happens when, so he can answer, but we're not gonna have any problems, so you guys can only call just to say aye.
He's, he's great to deal with, so we appreciate it.
The last two weeks has been the worst.
Well, the winter was pretty bad with the cold.
Winter also.
Yeah, yeah, that was bad. Any other questions for these gentlemen, or anything else we wanna add to?
Nope.
Nope. I appreciate it. Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
There's no one here from the public that has any questions in regards to this. Nope. Okay, thank you. Award IT Service Contract to CM Geeks, effective July first.
We, unfortunately, we are losing Karen Paray and her firm to be our IT service provider, so we had to go out with an RFP to seek proposals from firms to, to take over this service for the town. We received a number of proposals. The review committee that I put together had shortlisted three different firms to interview, based on their qualifications, experience, et cetera, and of the three firms that were interviewed, it was unanimous decision of the review committee that we recommend that we award the contract to CM Geeks. They have a lot of central mass experience with communities of our size, using the software that we use. They also have experience in working collaboratively with regional dispatch, public safety, EMS, so we feel that they have all the resources that we need to almost be a seamless transition from service with Karen Paray to service with CM Geeks, effective July first.
So are these gentlemen gonna expand what, what was done before?
They'll basically be doing identically the level of service that Karen Paray's company was doing before.
But you said the nine, you said the police...
They have the ability to, as, as I think I've expressed to the board before, I do have some concern over the fact that the police are not part of this contract currently. They use their own IT person within staff, one person, and, you know, in, in discussion with the police chief, I'm a tad concerned that there may be a time that that one person would leave for whatever reason, and we would quickly have to pick up with providing IT services for the police department. So it was important to me and to the review committee that when we look at proposals, we made sure that the service provider had experience with police departments, but also has experience with regional dispatch, because the fire department ambulance is part of this contract. So right away, we know that this, the new service provider has to be aware of the issues that, you know, the, the EMS side has, that the fire calls has, working with regional dispatch.
Can they, can, after we, if we approve this, can they just go over to the police, the fire, even though they might not be there now, but if something happens to that one person?
Yes, so...
They can, they can maybe take in and...
This was, this was a key thing. They had to show that they had the ability to quickly step into play and take over that service if needed.
Okay.
Are we gonna have similar to Karen, a single person that works for Wes Boilston, there are, there are IT contact at CM Geeks, or is this gonna be a team effort?
This group is, does it a little bit differently, it's a team effort, and they're all, they're all skilled at all the, the main levels of IT service that we need, but also within the group of four, and they also have some areas of expertise. The nice thing is, is that we make the phone call, and we get that phone call immediately answered, so we have someone immediately helping that person whose computer doesn't work, or what have you, so it's immediate response. And then if it's something more complicated, then they pull that person with that higher level of expertise in that issue, and then bring them over to work with us to, to resolve the issue.
So do I understand correctly that nobody physically going to work here?
They, they will be here at times, yes. It's, it's a twenty-four-seven, three-sixty-five level of service, and with all of the firms that we interviewed, eighty percent of the calls for service get handled remotely, meaning that they log on to our computers, and they can resolve almost anything remotely. If they can't resolve it remotely, then they'll come on-site to help us with it, but there's other things that they need to do in person on a fairly regular basis as well. So we will be seeing this company almost, I mean, I think that there were times when Karen came here to the, to the department, just because it was easier for her to do that, but she wasn't necessarily available to the staff, but in terms of availability to staff, this will be the same level of service. That was important to us in making the decision.
One other question, you know, people, you know, when there is a, say suppose the town clerk or Nancy is not there, they do say that, you know, can he post this agenda? Are they do that kind of thing, too? Or, you know, I, I have seen often, you know, Toby from the ZBA, you know, she would say, CC to town clerk, CC to Karen, can anyone of the, can anyone of you, can he post it?
So the, so the new dictate from the town clerk's office is that the town clerk has to, or the assistant town clerk has to be the one that does meeting postings. So CM Geeks is not going to be able to do meeting postings, but CM Geeks could help us with, if there's someone who just hasn't learned yet how to do some of that website posting that we've all been learning, CM Geeks will step in and help them with that. Or, but we also are developing a team of in-staff who can step in and help another office or department with that if necessary.
That's within the yearly, that's not an extra charge. That's, that's part of the contract.
That's part of the contract. There's very few things that CM Geeks will charge us extra for. That's one of the things we liked about them, is they're very much a full service, and they base their pricing because they have such experience with municipalities of our size, that they know what to expect, especially given the types of software that we use, it's, they're very familiar with all that software. So they know what to expect and what typically might go wrong, so they felt comfortable in their pricing. The things that they would charge us extra for are these large projects, like say we made a decision to change our financial software. Something like that would be above and beyond the contract value.
So this is a, not a time and material contract, it's a, you're gonna get X dollars per month?
This is a set price. The only time that they would add to the contract value is if we added an additional server or more workstations and things like that.
I do have another question. I do see here, you know, forty-four PCs, per PC, thirty dollars per month. What, how the charges, how they are charging is what's, if my PC never break down, or, you know, do you expect there will be a problem without one PC all the time?
So Raj, what you're seeing here is pricing that we would use as unit pricing, as you do with any contracts, so that if we do add additional computers or servers...
Or it will go off.
...to the contract, they know, we know in advance what that extra cost is gonna be to the contract. We require them to identify it, they're gonna, they have to stick to it. They can't go and say, oh, we're gonna charge you such and such. We say, no, you're gonna charge us this, because that's what was in your proposal.
So on this, on this, at this time, we can have only forty-four PCs in our town?
The pricing was based on the inventory of hardware, software, et cetera, that we currently have, and so if we go and we add, you know, more workstations, et cetera, then there would be an increased value to the contract we do as a change order.
So right, no, I didn't say, right now, who's responsible for updating the website? The town's, the town's page and website?
So, right now, every department or office or board is responsible for updating their own webpage. If it's a, a committee that doesn't have staff support, then there's several of us who have learned how to do that to update them for them.
And how's this price compared to what we paid in the past?
It's actually quite a bit less.
Okay. So as, at, at the beginning, once we sign with them, are they gonna come in and look, they probably already looked at everything, but are they gonna come in and maybe they're gonna make changes that they feel, is that all part of it, you think?
This, several of the firms that we interviewed immediately wanted to change some of the software that we had in place, because they wanted it to be software that they were more comfortable in using. CM Geeks is willing to use our existing software and, and protocols, unless that they feel it's an issue, and if, then if they feel it's an issue, they will come to me and they'll say, we're recommending that we make this change for the following reasons. So this is not a firm that's gonna come and upset the apple cart. They will come in, they'll do an evaluation. We already have a planned transition time with Karen of a few days before she leaves at the end of her contract, so that they have ability to meet with Karen, learn from her, understand what's where, how it's going, what the things are that they need to be aware of as they walk in the door.
So they are comfortable with that, with that website, I'm sure if they do other towns, they must be able to...
They have a lot of communities that are using the virtual town halls and schools.
So they can, they can answer questions if need be.
Can I ask one other question? I do know that, you know, we do have the sensitive datas in the town clerk's office, as well as tax collector's office. How comfortable you are giving a, the access, remote access, and how do we make sure all those things are secure?
Very comfortable. I mean, the, we have to trust that our IT service provider, whether it was Karen Paray, or CM Geeks, or whoever, has to be trusted to access this information, and it was very important in checking the references from the other communities to, you know, find out, you know, how that's been working, and Nancy went through the process of checking the references for us, and all of the references received were glowing.
So when they are, when they are, when they are checking on a computer, in a tax collector's office, so they normally request authorization, we will give authorization for that computer, and then when the work is done, we will be terminating them?
I'm not sure I know what you're asking, Raj.
If, say, computer in the tax collector office, there's some issue, so we call them, then there is a technician sitting there, somewhere in Summerwell, so he want to have an access for that computer, so he will ask for an authorization...
Correct.
...to enter into this computer. So somebody will be there, and then when the work is done, that access will be terminated.
Well, is that, is that, are you sure that's how it's working? Is that, are you sure that's how it's working? Because I know, I know if I work with a third party, a custom service, they give me that access. But I know my one at work, I could be just sitting there and they connect, I don't have to give them...
No, the owner of the company stated that they would request permission to log in with you. So if they're looking, if they're servicing, you know, remotely, say, I call up and I say...
Yeah, they're going to ask you and you're going to say, "Okay."
They're going to say, "Do I have permission to log on to your computer?"
Then you're going to get something on your screen and you're going to hit, "Okay."
Something pops up and you can see when they're there. And then they're going to say, "Okay, are we done? Is everything resolved?" We're going to say, "Yes." And then you can visibly see that they have exited from the computer.
Servers and things like that, if they need to get in and check things, they're going to have access.
They would have remote access, and that's part and parcel of the responsibility within the contract.
No, I think that's, I think that's great, really, because anytime...
That's the desktops. Usually, contracts like this, they have access to the servers to do maintenance...
With no issue.
24/7.
Yes, that goes by right within the contract.
Okay.
Because they have to do the maintenance work on those.
Is part of the contract any monthly maintenance that they're just going to do?
Yes.
They're just going to, one day, somebody at the office is going to check in, make sure things are looking good, make sure there's no...
We had a lot of discussion about that because the staff was worried, are they going to interrupt use of my computer during the day to do some of those weekly or monthly updates? And the answer was, they always do those in off-hours. Typically, it's in a Sunday morning. Other times, especially for a fire EMS, they'll probably work with the fire department, determine what the best time of the week and month is to do that, so that there's less likelihood that those fire EMS computers would be busy. But they do it remotely, at night or early morning. And then they said that they always do a live check back in with each user to make sure that any of the updates actually work correctly.
Any issues? Yeah, that's great. I think that's going to be nice.
And just so the public knows, at the bottom of the sheet we're looking at, there's a price for what we currently have. If we drop computers, it's $30 for a PC, $200 for a server. If we drop a computer, it goes down by that amount. If we add a computer, it goes up by that amount, and it's spelled out in the contract. So there'll be no surprises to the budget, once we, as we move along. We'll know, all right, we're going to get a new server, add $1,200 a month to the IT bill.
Yes. And if we have any large projects that we're considering, they would give us an estimate in terms of what the cost of that would be before we make any decision about whether or not to move ahead with that project.
But I think some of these things that they talked to, but I think Karen has been talking about probably for a while, too.
She has.
Server issues, we have some servers that aren't. So they may come back and say what Karen has been saying, and we just need to step up and fix some of this stuff. Some software, Karen's been saying...
Yes.
We should update some of this software. She's been telling us this.
Right.
So these guys, I don't think these guys are going to say, "Oh, they're just trying to get more money." I think they're going to probably, after they look through things, just to make it better for us.
And we already have some ideas of things that we'd like to discuss with them about the feasibility.
Okay, do I hear a motion to award this contract?
Motion.
A motion is second in the other discussion. Hearing none, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, next is drawing for island at Laurel and Hosma. Sorry?
You want me to do it?
Laurel and Hosma.
Just draw it.
Shirley Fancy, so we can reach out to them and let her know. And that was the only island that was available, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Next item, once I find where we are. Recognize the acceptance of the following donations from the bandstand committee, and to approve the expenditure of these funds for general purposes, $265 from Committee to Elect Jim O'Day, and $265 from Curtis Industries. Do I hear a motion?
I actually have a question. These are always $265. What, anybody know what that number comes from?
It was $15.
So it's just like, that's a fee to host a concert?
That's what the bandstand committee...
Okay, I mean, it's just an odd number.
It's their sponsor, their sponsor.
Okay, it's just an odd number.
Actually, we went up $15.
They look at what the cost is for their bands?
No, I just...
No, I just was wondering, I'm curious where it came from.
And I'd like...
They do accept more money, too.
Of course.
If they can.
I'd just like to see that Curtis Industries, they've done a lot in town, and now they're also sponsoring, you know, things like this. So that's great. So I have, I believe I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, Town Administrator Report.
Okay, the first item I have on my report is actually a request from the Finance Committee. Ray Burkholt, the Finance Committee Chair, had asked that the Board of Selectmen consider adding a Finance Committee representative to the Marijuana Studies Subcommittee. They have strong interest in the financial impacts of any proposed bylaw. So I'm asking if you would consider voting to expand the committee to add a FinCom member.
Do you think, can I...
I could just add, yeah.
Can I, can I... Do you think maybe you can reach out to the Cannabis Control Committees? I don't remember. They do recommend Planning Board, Zoning Board, Board of Selectmen, and Board of Health. I don't remember, you know, there is a, they did recommend FinCom. So is that a way?
It's our committee, so I mean, that's a recommendation from them. But I personally would say, I want to add a Board of Health member. We've had a Board of Health member come to each one of our meetings because we've invited them. But I think a Board of Health member should be added. So that's what I would say. I don't really see a need for a FinCom member. I mean, basically, this is no different than any bylaw change. There's also, there's always a money issue connected to it. So that would mean if we change a residential area, we change a zoning somewhere, that we would invite them every time to be on the Subcommittee. I would like to add the Board of Health, put a member onto the board. Like I say, he's been coming, but it's not official. So that would make the board...
Is the, it's a 3% local tax?
Maximum.
Maximum?
Up to 3%.
Is that, I'm assuming that's the reason why the FinCom members, if FinCom wants to have a member on that board, is to be a member, a part of the discussion on what the intent is with the local options?
See, I don't personally think that that board's going to make that decision. First of all, it's going to be town meeting in this board that is going to make, just like we did for the hotel and things like that.
That's, I'm telling you, that's the reason that, I'm not saying that you're going to make that decision, that the ad hoc...
Not only 3%, I think when you sign, when you get a group, there could be other money that comes into town. But that's not, that's the same with all...
I'm just saying, that's the reason...
Right. I think that, I think when we get to that point, when we talk about, they would be involved.
I think, you know, my understanding is 3% is the maximum state allowed?
No, but I've read recently in the paper that I think it's a lot more than 3% some of these towns are getting. So there's other agreements when we make the agreement with these groups, but that will come in front of this board, too, right?
That would be the community impact fee that gets...
Yeah, right. But tax-wise, 3%.
Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
I think it makes sense for the Board of Health. I think that's very logical. I don't think it could hurt to have the FinCom because a lot of times, when we get into discussions, they're brought in at a later date. Personally, I think bringing them in sooner is a really good idea. And I do agree that I think the Board of Health makes...
I guess I'm confused. This committee was really put into place for the moratorium and to put the bylaw together.
Make recommendations to bylaws.
Correct, to the bylaw. I don't know if it's going to stay together. I mean, I don't think we've decided that yet. Is it going to stay together for every application that comes in, every, I think, those come in front of this board?
I mean, that's going to be spelled out in the regulations and the bylaw.
Correct. This is no different, this is no different than any bylaw change, that a group gets together, the Planning Board, or the ZBA, and I don't think this is any different. I think when we get to that next step, if this board decides, or that group decides that this is the way it's going to work, town meeting, this board's going to see it, we're going to meet with the Planning Board and the ZBA, probably is, because we're only Subcommittee members, we're only two members, all of us are going to bring it back to our boards and discuss it. And then the next step, I think finance has to be involved. But this, there's really no financial in this by now, anyway.
Did Ray say, I mean, it just says they have a strong interest in the financial impacts of the proposed bylaw. Did he say anything beyond that, or was that the extent of his communications?
No, not, he didn't really provide a lot of detail in terms of the, you know, the rationale for wanting to be involved. You know, I did ask him, you know, are you looking to do one member, two members? And he said one member with perhaps an alternate. But there wasn't a lot of discussion between he and I in terms of the reason why they felt that there should be involved.
Is this a vote of the board, of their board?
I can't, I don't know for certain that it was a vote of their board. I do know that the board has discussed it because he did indicate that he was hoping a few of his members would be here tonight to be part of the discussion with you.
So, and that's, I was going to say, why don't we table this and get more information as to why they feel they need to be, they need representation on it. They may, there may be something that...
I just, I just know, I guess if they want to give input, which the group and all of our groups will have public meetings, input on what the bylaw looks like. I don't know. I mean, do they, maybe the group will say, "Well, we're only going to do three." Are they going to say, "Well, we want six"? I don't know.
I, that's all.
I would suggest that if we're going to carry on the discussion, we do it to the June 20th meeting. That's the night that we'll be having school committee here, and hopefully Finance Committee members as well, to talk about that issue of school capital projects. So it'd be the perfect time to bring it forward again.
Fine, if we can, and then if we can just ask if they voted on their board that this is the way. And do we want to add, can we do that now, to add a Board of Health member?
It's your vote, your process, if you'd like to...
Yeah, because it's, I think, I think we missed it when we did it, but he has been coming. So that will make the board, that will make the Subcommittee...
I have no issue with it. Is it going to be an issue because it wasn't spelled out in the warrant?
I mean, what was spelled in the warrant was the Finance Committee request. So you might want to just wait on that to the June 20th meeting, so that you probably know...
Yeah, we'll probably meet before that, and I'm sure he'll come anyway. So, you know, but I just think it'll be, make it official, they'll go back to their board, appoint one person. Okay, next.
Next item is, I just wanted to let the board know, although you've received an email of this, but wanted to let the board and the public know that regarding the open meeting law complaint that we had that was filed by John Schlecki, we have received notice from the State Attorney General's Office that their finding was that there was no violation of the open meeting law that occurred, as was alleged. The AG's office found that the board was entirely in their rights in handling the public comments section of that January 17th meeting with Mr. Schlecki. So there is no additional action that needs to be taken by the board on that. In terms of Grants Report, we did receive notice that we will be getting a $15,000 municipal vulnerability preparedness grant, and this will be used by the DPW to do an assessment of the town, to see if there's any climate change conditions that would provide problems to the community. This would be in the area of flooding and things like that. So the $15,000 can be used to obtain technical support and planning tools that would identify any hazards, and to develop strategies that the town can put into place to address those climate change issues. So Butch Jackson will be taking lead on that grant project. We're also receiving a $613.50 grant from the state as part of their disbursement of fees collected from the Transportation Network Company Division of Public Utilities. It's a fee that transportation network companies are required to pay into the Department of Public Utilities, and that money is then used to help communities address impact of transportation network services on our roads. So it can be used for signage, crosswalk stations, there's a variety of different things that we could apply that money for. And we can talk about that at a future meeting. And then we did receive notice that we did not receive the award of the $20,000 IT infrastructure grant that we had applied for through the state's best practices program. That was for a number of services for scanning of documents that would help us load more information onto our vision software, the website that's available for the public, for the parcel data. So I'm assuming that we'll probably be trying to attempt a grant application on that again next year. And then for final updates, we did get several residents inquiring if there should be concern about the potential of increasing mosquito populations from the water that's accumulating in the new detention basins that DCR built along the causeway at the reservoir. So we were, through a recommendation of the Worcester Department of Public Health, we connected with the Central Mass Mosquito Control Project, who at no cost to the town has checked those areas for us and found that there are no mosquito larvae in the water at the time. And so they'll be checking those for us, you know, throughout the season, just to make sure that we have no issues. If they do find any issues, they'll notify our Board of Health. And then on the ABM lighting issue, ABM was the firm that did the ESCO project at the school and several of our town buildings. And we did find that there were some outstanding issues still with some of the work that had been done. We have some lighting issues at the fire station and the library. We have an issue with the boiler at the elementary school. I did contact ABM to ask them to look into this. They've received my email. They have, are responding to me with an email which I have not received yet. But they did say that they're looking to see whether it's something that they feel that they can repair under the contract. They did warn me that there are some things that may be no longer their responsibility because it's beyond the one-year warranty period. But they would work with us to try to decide what would need to be done to rectify any situation. So I'm going to need to get back to you on the status of that because I have not received the email that they said they had already sent to me. I did ask them yesterday and again today to resend that email. I've not received it, but I'll be bringing this back to the board. And just a reminder also, we do need to make a decision as to whether or not we want to continue with ABM for that measurement and verification work that needs to be done. We're obligated to continue it until such time that you decide to cancel that agreement with ABM. If we do cancel that agreement with ABM, we need to let DOER know, so that we're no longer in the hook for providing those annual reports.
When they come look at the lights and whatever else is not working, they will give you an estimate, there will be no charge for us, for them looking at it.
I'm not going to say that, John, until I see that email that they've, that they said that they've sent.
You'll let us know.
They will let you know.
What's the latest date that we have to let them know we're not going to continue on with the contract?
Well, we're obligated to provide the DOE report at the end of each year. So we probably should go no later, I would say, than the July meeting to make a decision on that.
Because I know my decision is, my vote's going to be on that, but I'd like to see this issue fixed before we tell them, "See you later."
I agree.
It looks like they're bending over backwards to help us, since we don't even get the emails from them. So, okay. Fisk Update, project status for the senior center. John, do you have anything today from today?
Yeah, the foundations are almost complete, and should be starting seeing walls in the next couple of weeks. So it's going to be exciting, moving forward. The utilities are going in. So we're moving forward, and the next meeting is this Tuesday, the 12th.
7:00 PM, right here.
Yeah.
Meetings, invitation and announcements, Board of Selectmen Retreat, June 11th, South School at 6:00 PM, Band Concert, June 17th, June 24th, 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM at the Bandstand. And future agenda items, anybody?
Talk about the lock policy and the doors. We're going to do that sometime in the future.
I know that Nancy's working to try to get a cost estimate on some of those changes.
Only thing I have is, I want to thank the members of the public who showed up to vote. That's the way you can affect change in this town, going to town meeting and voting, going to the ballot box and voting. Complain all you want on social media, that's not how you affect change in this town. You have to vote.
And do we know what the percentage of turnout was?
Less than 10%.
No.
Nine, thank you.
Slightly over nine.
Slightly over nine, okay. The only thing I'd ask is, I know, did ABM ever look at this building?
No.
Because I come in, I mean, this room's either cold or hot. I come in on the weekends sometimes, and the calls are cold. You know, it's cold down there. So, not them, but I don't know if there's something else we can do to have them look at, maybe, I don't know, possibly saving some money, because, you know, in the summer, it's sometimes warm when you walk in the building, when it should be lower, because there's no one in the building on a Sunday or Saturday night.
We, you know, these thermostats are programmed, but it may be that they're not programmed to the most efficient schedule.
Two hours, yeah, right. So I don't know what we need to do. I know, I think we talked about IBM looking at this building at the beginning. Pat, do you remember that? We, because they were supposed to look at all the buildings, right?
No, but we purposely excluded this building because it was so new.
We didn't...
It was included in the contract.
I thought we were going to do this building, because it's not, it wasn't, it's not a new building.
But we did not exclude, we did not include this building in the, anybody else would be...
Yeah, so if we can just, just to see if there's money to be saved. So, if hearing nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion is second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.